Please let me call this the Tennessee City Council meeting of May 2, 2017. Tara, would you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Howard?
Here.
Vice Mayor Yang?
Here.
Councilwoman Greeney?
Here.
Councilman Firerow?
Here.
Mayor here.
Here. I'd like to welcome everyone here and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is much appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining these opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign-up sheet has been provided as you enter the council chambers and for those individuals designed to address city council during the appearance of citizens section of our agenda. At this time, I'd like to ask evangelist John Wheeler with our God Bless America rally to lead us in our invocation, followed by our invocation by Boy Scout troop number five from Virginia Avenue Methodist Church, and they'll be leading us in our pledge. Would you please rise?
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity, Lord. I thank you, Lord, that we, I just acknowledge that, Lord, we're led by a government that we're supposed to submit ourselves to and pray for. And I do pray for these leaders. I thank you for their sacrifices they make by running this great city and sacrifices in their families and, Lord, their time, Lord, to do this. And I pray, Lord, for law enforcement. I pray for my brothers in arms. I pray, God, for safety and courage as they do a hard job, Lord, in the hard times. But I pray for all first responders. Lord, I pray for wisdom tonight as these men and ladies and gentlemen get together and they tackle the issues of today in today's meeting. I pray for wisdom. I pray for guidance, Lord, insight, Lord. Lord, we thank you again for this opportunity, Lord, just to stand before this city council and share in this event. Lord, I thank you most of all for Jesus Christ and with sacrifice and a cross. I pray you bless this meeting in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys. Mr. Sora, do we have any additions to our agenda this evening?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
We have two proclamations and one recognition on tonight's agenda. The first proclamation is recognizing the 50th anniversary of Full Gospel Fellowship Church located on Ridgecrest Road in Bristol, Tennessee. I'd like to ask Margaret Firerowman to read the proclamation. Reverend Jerry Taylor is in attendance this evening to accept the proclamation on behalf of the congregation.
If you'll just come up to the podium, I'll read it and then I'll hand it to you. Whereas the Full Gospel Fellowship Church is celebrating its 50th anniversary during 2017, and whereas the Full Gospel Fellowship Church has roots beginning with its first service in the current building on Sunday, June 4, 1967, and whereas a group of individuals gathered in the Holston Valley area prior to 1967 and rented the Florence Union Church Building for the purpose of organizing a church to be built in the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and whereas the Full Gospel Fellowship Church was built on Ridgecrest Road on a hill where the church overlooks much of the beloved city of Bristol, Tennessee, and whereas Bristol residents were originally served by their founding pastor Reverend Grady McMurray, who remained pastor of the church until his death on Thanksgiving Day, 1998, and whereas the congregation is being served on its 50th anniversary by the Reverend Jerry Taylor, who has served faithfully as a member of the congregation since 1995 and was elected pastor in May 2016, and whereas the church family continues to be an active congregation committed to evangelism and discipleship in the community. And now, therefore, Chad King, mayor of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, does hereby proclaim June 4, 2017, in the city of Bristol, Tennessee, as the Full Gospel Fellowship Church 50th anniversary, the second day of May, 2017.
Oh, nothing like a picture.
Next, we have a joint proclamation with the city of Bristol, Virginia, which designates May 13, 2017, as Ron Nekia Day. I think I pronounced that right. I would like to ask Mayor Lee, Councilmember Lee Powers to read the proclamation and also to correct me on that pronunciation, Mr. Malin Luttrell of Bristol Baseball Incorporated is with us this evening to accept the proclamation.
Great, thank you. Whereas 65 years ago, Ron Nekia made baseball history in Bristol at Shaw Stadium, Bristol, Virginia, and whereas as a pitcher for the Bristol Twins, many came to watch the hard-throwing right-hander from Monahahela, Pennsylvania, and whereas Ron Nekia had a moving fastball and a sharp-breaking curveball that overmatched many, and whereas on May 13, 1952, Ron Nekia set a record in professional baseball for pitching 27 strikeouts in one nine-inning game, and whereas 65 years later, still he stands alone with one of the most amazing records in the annals of baseball history. And now, therefore, the mayors of the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia do hereby proclaim May 13, 2017, as Ron Nekia Day in the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia, mayors Bill Hartley and mayors Chad King.
On behalf of Ron and his family, I'm much honored to accept this joint proclamation from the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia, and if I may, I'd like to read a message that Ron sent. Ron says, "I can't believe that after 65 years, someone can remember this day. How very thoughtful. I do appreciate the thoughts and am honored to be remembered. As I've said many, many times, my life is tied to Bristol. Thanks, Ron."
We have one item of recognition on tonight's agenda. The city has over 330 full and part-time employees that serve the community on a daily basis. We frequently hear of employees that go above and beyond in their service. To that end, the Bristol First program has been developed to recognize their efforts. Tonight, we honor our latest recipient of the Bristol First Award. Ms. Cherry Talbert, Director of Community Relations, is present to give us a brief overview of the program and announce tonight's award winners.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Mr. Sora, we recognize every day because our department answers about 3,000 phone calls a month, and out of those, you would not believe the number of calls that we receive saying how wonderful our employees are and thanking us for all the different things that they do. And we recognize that our employees are one of our greatest assets. Their never-failing professionalism is always brought up, their attention to detail, and their ability to stay calm under pressure, and, of course, the willingness to help out in this city, which makes it one of those places everybody just wants to live. Our recipient tonight, Bob Williams, was nominated by Jennifer Bays on March 28, and I will have to say, Mr. Williams gets probably a bulk of the comments positively relayed to us through our department during any work week. Mrs. Bays had this to say. "While attempting to move the Chester doors on the side of the road for the city to pick up, Mr. Williams happened by while reading the water meters. As I was trying to wrestle the piece of furniture onto a handcart, Mr. Williams stopped and asked if he could help. We loaded it on the cart, and as I was walking away and walking it up an incline, it slid off. He again got out of his vehicle and this time helped me carry it to the side of the road. He could have easily driven by but insisted that he took the time to stop and help. He has a kind smile and a friendly manner, and I greatly appreciate his willingness to go beyond and lend a helping hand." Bob, if you'll come up?
We have no presentations this evening, so we'll move on to public hearings. Public hearing is hereby open for ordinance 17-2, amending the official general plan for land use. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize the matter?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. As council is aware, last year, the city engaged the consulting firm of McGillan Associates from Knoxville, Tennessee, to evaluate our existing trail system and develop a future roadmap for, and a funding strategy for advancing a comprehensive plan addressing the city's trail and greenway system. The effort brought input from a variety of individuals and groups having an interest in the development of a comprehensive greenway trail study. This plan was presented to the Parks and Recreation Commission as well as the Planning Commission on Monday, March 20. The Planning Commission formally voted to accept the recommendation set forth in the plan, and it was presented to city council at their March 28 meeting, and they considered, and you considered this at your April 4 meeting. The, tonight, anytime we amend our official plan for land use, this requires a public hearing and a second reading in order for the cities, for this concrete, for this plan to become a part of the official plan. Now, please note that for any grant opportunity, it is necessary for city council to formally adopt this plan and incorporate it as part of its general plan for land use.
Gotcha. Any city council member want to ask a question or have any comments? Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to address council on this matter? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address before making your comments. Having seen none, we'll move on to the appearance of citizens. This section provides an opportunity for the public to address city council on any matter that is not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will not likely be made at this time, since in most cases neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to the city council, or as appropriate, have staff meet with you as an effort to satisfy your concern. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to present them. I have been provided a list of individuals designed to address council this evening, and we will start with Rema Glazier. Rema, are you in the?
It's Remy Gauzier.
Sorry, excuse me. I do apologize. I do apologize, sir.
My name is Remy Gauzier. I live in Sunnybrook subdivision. This pornography store that is being planned at the base of our subdivision essentially is a bravel, is a house of ill repute, and I'm going to tell you why. I have two sons. I've raised my children. One's in the Air Force like me. The other one manages an adult store in Louisiana. They call it a novelty store, okay? This store is called a lingerie store. The reason they approved it was because they found a loophole, okay? A loophole is what you hire a lawyer for, okay? The loophole is 51% of his inventory is lingerie. Now, it stands to reason that 51% of his inventory is lingerie, because it doesn't sell. He's probably got lingerie that's been there for 10 years. 99% of what he sells is pornography, is devices, sexual devices, leather, whips, chains, videos, okay? What they have in these stores are booths, viewing booths, okay? By law, a man and a woman can't go in to view the pornography, but two men can, and two men do. And what these places become is a den for men to find men like them. Now, I know we're all supposed to be concerned about the LGBT community and all that stuff, but since when does forsaking a Christian subdivision in a Christian town, you can see that beautiful white cross from this location. It's within 1,000 feet of a church. The school bus stops right there. I've had to stop for hundreds of times so the kids could go out across the street. The lady that lives right across the street, I could throw a rock and hit her house. Her grandson is mentally challenged. He will walk off with anybody. My four, the four children that live next door to me are mentally challenged. They will walk off with anybody. If you approve this store, think about this, Hatfield, what if his competition is a McCoy, okay? And you approve this store right next to Friendship Ford, right next to Parkway Auto Sales, right down the street from Gil Gate. Let's just say Mr. McCoy bought that lot on the other side of Parkway, and you approve this pornography store. So you've got a Hatfield porno store here and his competition, the McCoy, he's just bought that lot. He's waiting on your decision. You've got to approve him now if you approve that guy. So are we going to be known as the Bristol Motor Mile right there? Or are we going to be known as the Bristol Porno Mile? Because anybody within this area drives by that prime location on Voluntier Parkway, that's what they're going to see every time they drive by it. All hours of the night, people going in and out of there. The Hatfields' response to this, or the lawyers' response to this was, "We're going to build a privacy fence so nobody has to see what's going on around the business." Well, if it's a legitimate business, then why do you need a privacy fence? I dare the council right now, I bought my truck, I could draw four people right now to that business right down the street, four blocks away. Let's go in that business and see what they really do sell.
You can wrap it up.
And let's go through the last 100 sales, and let's see if 99 of those sales are pornography. Because if it's pornography, it's not a lingerie store, and you're sacrificing this whole subdivision
Mayor, we are.
For one business owner.
Thank you, sir.
We're at our three minutes. Be on.
Next is Eddie Mayberry.
Eddie Mayberry, Live at 109 Sunnybrook Drive. I'm also renewing our concerns for what is going in at that location, but I want to probably go a little bit farther since we had a zoning hearing. I know that we are live on television and that many people are looking that are no longer able to come out here any longer, and I would be hopeful of those that are members of churches that they will consider getting to their pastors and asking them to consider what is taking place here in the city of Bristol. And you people that are on the council here have certain authority. You appoint the zoning board and get them together for the purpose of zoning. We come to a hearing and the level of incompetency you would not imagine. Now, W, what YCB or whatever the television station is, they got it on camera. They got it on tape, and you can get that and look at who you have put on the board there. And we have a city attorney that was there for the purpose of leveraging everything toward Mr. Hatfield. The board meeting was not a proper board meeting run by the principals that are set down by robust rules of order, and that is something we want to really request that you consider, as not just consider, we'd like to have every member of that zoning board removed for incompetency. We have a city attorney that I believe that we pay. I believe all of you get paid by the people that are residents of Bristol, Tennessee. You are hired to represent people, not a individual concern. We don't believe that you need to be on the payroll of Bristol, Tennessee for the purpose of representing people that would go to a meeting such as that and then would encourage them when the vote doesn't go the way you want to, then you take a more to vote until you get to the results that you're looking for. I'm hoping that everybody that see this, and see each of you here, and I challenge the mayor to speak for you, or you can get together and let him allow each one of you to tell us where your heart is with what is going on there, because I still will also reiterate that I don't believe a one of you would allow for something like this to go in at no subdivision where you are, that you doesn't go farther than you have gone with us in doing this. We have had to go out and try to hire attorneys and pay money to get them to research something that you probably already know, because some of you probably wasn't on the board at some of the times that they passed some of these things, but you are on the board now. You're representing the city of Bristol and the people of Bristol, not a single entity.
We're at our three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Ben Phillips?
My name's Ben Phillips. I reside at 104 Sunnybrook Drive, and I was also at the zoning meeting on April 21, and I hope I can live the rest of my life and say that was the most pathetic display of civics that I ever have to witness, because it was really bad. And Ms. Childress with the Bristol Herald Courier has the whole thing on video, and I request that each one of you get a copy of that video if you were not there to see just the level incompetence of the people that this board has appointed to represent the city on the zoning board, because it is bad. And I'd like to call for an immediate removal of every member of that board and replacement. Even Mr. Hensley was the only person there who seemed to care, the only person to ask questions of the people that showed up at that meeting. I think it just needs a clean board, a full removal and replacement of that entire board, because it was a sad day to call yourself a Bristolian. It really was. It was pathetic on their part. It made this entire board look bad for, and your predecessors for appointing them, and it reflected bad on the entire city.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council on any subject? Please state your name and address.
Maggie Hess from Bristol, from McDowell Street, 245 McDowell Street. I was going to talk about something else, but I have had this happen about three times coming to the city council meeting and feeling really torn about how I feel during the beginning of the meeting due to my beliefs and a conflict of interest in the way that the meeting starts and my own personal beliefs that are very strong and deeply rooted. I know that probably a lot of you might take offense at the fact that I, a person like me, if you didn't notice, didn't stand for the parent, the pledge, and I do not mean anything wrong by that, but I really don't mean anything to be dehumbling. or, I mean, I mean to be humble and, but the reason that I don't stand is for a reason. And it's something that I think you all should really think about, and I don't think you should have the prayer or the pledge. Because this is a public meeting, and like in the schools, and we don't have prayer in the schools, I have the same argument towards having a prayer here because people in my family have had atheism, they've been atheists. I'm not an atheist, but I really believe strongly that everyone should have the right to their beliefs. And it misrepresents people and it, it, it makes it so that, like, if you aren't of the belief that is dominant, then you are not being represented fully. And so that's why I believe that. And then the pledge is, it says God in it, and that's just the same thing. And I just thank you for listening to my comments. I really appreciate everything, and I am sorry that the store issue is so hot right now because, well, that's not what I was talking about, so I'm not going to go on about that. Peace to all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address counsel? We have no appointments this evening, so we'll move on to the ordinance seventeen-three. This next item on the agenda is the first reading of ordinance seventeen-three, adopting a budget and appropriating funds for the fiscal year July 1st, 2017 through June 30th of 2018. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, Mayor, tonight begins the first formal step in the adoption of the fiscal 2018 budget and appropriation ordinance. As you indicated, our fiscal year begins July 1st, 2017, and then culminates June 30th, 2018. The fiscal 2018 budget totals one hundred and six million, three hundred and ten thousand and eighty-two dollars. This reflects an increase of just under seven point three million, or seven point four percent from fiscal 2017. The municipal government portion of this amount stands at sixty-one thousand four, excuse me, sixty-one million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars, reflects an increase of slightly over five million dollars from the fiscal 2017. As, as in years past, this budget focuses on key themes of economic development, enhanced city services, and improved quality of life. The budget continues all city programs and services as in the past while still making strategic investments in the future needs of our community. Major projects this year include the opening of Fire Station Number Five and the employment of nine additional firefighters to make that possible, the reconstruction of East Cedar Street, major improvements at, at a water filtration plant and a regionally-owned wastewater treatment plant. It also focuses on key partnerships. The development of Tri-Cities Aerospace Park is a key element of our plan of work, as well as the development of Bristol Business Park in conjunction and in partnership with Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services and the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. In addition, we, we will continue to pursue partnerships with networks in the development of Partnership Part Two, and then also the construction of the new Pet Works Countywide Animal Shelter as we, as we look at a, at a new relationship with SBK. The budget does include an average wage, wage adjustment of three percent for employees. This includes a two-point-five percent merit increase for employees meeting performance expectations, and then an additional one percent for employees who are below the market wage study, which was recently completed and presented to city council during, during the work session. The proposed budget maintains the current property tax rate, solid waste fees, stormwater fees, and water and sanitary sewer rates. As, in the past, we normally adopt a, a tax rate at, at this point, or during the first two months as we, as we look through first and second reading. This is a reappraisal year, so we will not know what our certified rate is until later in the year. At that point, we'll bring forth a, an ordinance that would formally adopt the tax rate in support of the fiscal 2018 budget. The school system portion of the budget totals forty-four million, eight hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars, and reflects an increase of two million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand and nine dollars, or five point one percent of the 2017 budget. The municipal portion of the budget does remain unchanged from the, the day-long presentation that we had on April 25th during our work session. If approved tonight, we'll have a public hearing, and, and we'll consider this matter again on second reading at the June 6 meeting.
City member of council have questions for the staff?
Mr. Sora, would you share with our constituents when those public hearings will be?
Yes, the, well, the public hearing, the formal public hearing in which we will solicit formal comment on the, the statutory requirements will be at our, our business meeting on June 6 of this body. However, we will have three Bristol Exchange meetings in which we try to better inform the public of the details of the budget. You know, every budget, you know, what's presented tonight is a lot of numbers. But as you know from your day-long work session, there's, there's a plan of work that is embodied in, in these numbers. And at that meeting, we, we attempt to, to shed light on, on, on what is to be accomplished with the coming year budget. We will have the first of those meetings next Tuesday night, June 9th, in the cafeteria at Slater Center, beginning at 6:00 PM. We will also have a, a, a second meeting on Thursday, May the 11th, at 1:00 PM, also in the cafeteria at Slater Center. And then, then two weeks after, I guess it would be on Tuesday, May 23rd, will be in the Frank Winston Auditorium at Tennessee High School, and that will be at 6:00 PM. We'll also have members of city staff, department heads there that will share individually their plan of work, as well as, as answer any questions that the public might have about the particulars of their department.
Further questions for staff or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So at our work session, we talked about what might happen with the appraisal and then how we might set our tax rate from that, et cetera. So if we see that there's opportunity to fund some of our greenways, bikeways plan or whatever, at what point do we talk about that? Is that when we set the tax rate, or do we need to talk about that before we pass this budget? Or how do we do that if, if some of the projects that are not in here, that we are very interested in looking at trying to get started? How, at what point does that discussion come in?
Sure. That would come in at a work session probably in July, if history holds true. We normally get the, the equalized rate from the property assessor's office around the second week of July, which would give us ample time to discuss with city council. Your work session will be on the fourth Tuesday in July, and then that, that would set the stage for a first reading in August. If the, if that rate is delayed and we don't get it in August, we simply move it back to the appropriate timeline.
Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion from anyone else on the council?
I'd just like to say that again, our staff has done a fabulous job in putting all of this together. It's, you know, they start in November and work through until it's finally settled and passed in June. And council does have a lot of input, as do all of our boards and commissions. We have had a lot of studies done this past year that have helped to guide that process, and we just want to keep the wind at our backs and keep moving forward as best we can. And so a lot of good stuff in this budget, and I hope everyone will come out to the different exchanges that we're providing for information.
Anyone else?
Dina.
Is there any member of the audience that would like to address counsel on this Okay, Tara, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Sorry, I was taking.
It's okay.
Councilwoman Powell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Mayor King?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance seventeen-two, permitting the official general plan for, for land use. Mr. Sora, will you please summarize?
We did that, Mayor, under the, under the public, under the public hearing portion of the agenda earlier this evening. I'm not sure what I could add to the issue, other than staff certainly supports the adoption of ordinance seventeen-two. And this is specific to, it will significantly enhance our ability to be competitive in the grant application phase of funding any future trail enhancement project.
Any further comments or questions for staff?
The only comment I would make is that it is a very comprehensive plan. It's not intended to be implemented in just a very short period of time. It's generational and probably will spread out over two generations before it's completely implemented. It's a choose, pick and choose, kind of cafeteria style, depending on the cost, so that we can take a look at how it would work in with our parks and trail system as it exists today. Lot of good stuff in it, money well spent. You know, these studies are so important because being in the insurance business, it's our best insurance policy that we as a council have the best information that we could possibly have. So I'm excited about it. I think there's a lot of good to come from it, and I'm glad that we're passing it hopefully tonight.
And I'll add two elements. One thing is it, it ties together some of the existing trails that we have in places where it's not really feasible right now. And also, as we have some of those bigger infrastructure opportunities, whether it's T-Doc related projects or other things, when we have these plans in place and they're along that same corridor, it becomes very easy to introduce, here's a plan we already have in place, let's go ahead and build this into the infrastructure as we extend that.
And it's great to get the grant money, right?
When that happens, yes. Nice to share that cause.
I'll just add that we know that trails and greenways are a big part of economic development, part of quality of life. It's what particularly our younger folks are looking for, walkable communities. So it's what we need to be looking at for the next generation and for attracting and keeping some of our economic development efforts and jobs in this area. Also, we know that encouraging walking and biking and physical activity helps with our community's health, and that helps with employers to have a healthy workforce, et cetera. So I'm very hopeful that we can find some different partnerships and grants, as well as find whatever matching monies and things that we need to do as a community to make some of these things happen. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to take action?
Motion.
Second.
Any member of council like to discuss ordinance seventeen-two further? Public had an opportunity to comment on the issue during our first public hearings. I believe we're ready for the vote, Tara.
Councilwoman Powell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Mayor King?
Yes. Under the category of resolutions for council consideration this evening, we have Resolution seventeen forty-three, authorizing sale of certain surplus real property located at 1014 Anderson Street. Mr. Sora, will you summarize?
Yes, Mayor, as council may recall, it was probably two years ago that we, well, let me back up. In 2013, the Better Property Board issued a demolition order for 1014 Anderson Street. It had fallen into disrepair and was also delinquent in its, in taxes. The property was somewhat unique in terms of the character of the neighborhood, and staff sought other solutions, if it was possible to find those solutions, that would, that would allow a structure to maintain, to be maintained within that area that would be consistent with the architecture of that particular block. The staff approached, I guess maybe two years ago, staff approached the owner, and, and the owner deeded the property to, to the city. And the city advertised the property for electronic auction to determine if there was a potential buyer, an entrepreneur that, that would come in and retrofit the house for future use in that residential neighborhood, fearing that the demolition of the, of the property, a, a new home would certainly be constructed there, but it would be out of character with the neighborhood as, as it exists. We were unable to find, to do an electronic auction on this particular property. However, staff continued to canvass known, known business developers in this community that, that might potentially have an interest in that. A short time ago, Mr. Mitch Skaggs, who is a local contractor, made an offer of $6,700 to purchase the property with a commitment to rehabilitate the house and make it livable again. The $6,700 will allow for the, for the payment of delinquent property taxes both to the city of Bristol and to Sullivan County. With that as a pathway to move forward, to help preserve the structure, to help preserve the character of the neighborhood, staff recommends approval of Resolution seventeen forty-three that would allow the sale. While, while this is, is not a significant amount, typically we bring items that are of ten thousand, a value of $10,000 or greater to city council. Our charter does require that any real property be approved formally by city council.
Do we have any questions for staff on the matter?
Go ahead. You go.
Just on a technicality, I realize normally things that come to council are above the $10,000 threshold. Is, is it because it's real estate that it has to come before council? Thank you.
In the, in selling this, is there any time limit or any restraints in how quickly Mr. Skaggs needs to take some action on the, or is that possible to put that in, to give him a year, or any, anything to work on it or work with the Better Property Board to be sure?
That would be the avenue. That would be the avenue to work through the Better Property Board for, for any type of restrictions that, that might, that might be placed as part of, not as part of the sale, but, but it is still in front of the Better Property Board. It's never, it has never been dismissed from the Better Property Board. So, so if it, if it continued to remain in its current state, then the Better Property Board could, could take it up as an issue.
Okay. Because, and I find it distressing that we've had this property since 2013 and that it's taken, and I realize some of the different issues that have come up, but when, and that this is very unusual, but I would like to see us do something faster with property that, like this, if we have anything in the future. It's a long time to have a house that's not secured and not in great shape.
Actually, we, it's, it's been a little less than two years since it's actually been in our control.
Okay.
Other questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other member of council that would like to discuss further Resolution seventeen forty-three?
I would just say that I spoke with Mr. Skaggs about this yesterday, and he's very excited about the property. He has done quite a bit of rehab in the Bristol city limits proper, as well as in other areas. And he, he is a great steward in our, steward in our community as far as like trying to help people work with him who perhaps are not otherwise gainfully employed. So this is, I think, a win for all of us. It's a win for the neighborhood, a win for the city, and it's a win for those individuals that Mr. Skaggs will put together to do this job.
He has rehabbed many properties in Tennessee, and I totally agree with him.
I'll just add that the next-door neighbor is very excited to see this move on, and she also is very grateful. To the city said one of the things that's made the most difference is the special overlay zoning for Anderson area that has limited multiple apartments and single-family dwellings, and that that, over time, is making a big, big difference. So she's excited.
Absolutely.
Any member of the audience want to address counsel on this matter? Having seen none, we'll take the vote.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Mayor King?
Yes. Let's bring us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items?
Yes, Mayor, item A, the minutes of the April 4th, 2017 city council meeting. Item B, minutes of the April 25th, 27, 2017 city council work session. Item C, Resolution seventeen thirty-five, approving a grant agreement with Tennessee Department of Transportation for utilization of Federal Transit Administration, Section 5303, funds for the Bristol Metropolitan Planning Organization. fifty-three oh-three funds for the Bristol Metropolitan Planning Organization. And resolution D, or excuse me, item D, resolution seventeen thirty-six authorizing reimbursement payment to Sullivan County, Tennessee, for eight-hundred megahertz radios linked to the radio system. Item E, resolution seventeen thirty-seven awarding a bid for the painting of the Evoque water tank. Item F, resolution seventeen thirty-eight awarding a bid for painting at wastewater treatment plant. Item G, resolution seventeen thirty-nine awarding a bid for the purchase of a polymer makeup unit for the wastewater treatment plant. Item H, resolution seventeen forty, awarding a bid for the purchase of a closed-circuit television pipe inspection unit. Item I, resolution seventeen forty-one, awarding a bid for the purchase of a floating dock system. Item J, resolution seventeen forty-two, awarding a contract for auditing services. And item K, resolution seventeen forty-four, approving the renewal agreements with members of the Northeast Tennessee-Virginia Home Consortium.
Would any member of council like an item removed from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to take action?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Tara, let's take the vote.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor Yen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rini?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Mayor King?
Yes. From our Board of Education liaison report is Dr. Gary Lilly.
Good evening. So, yesterday morning, I was getting ready for work and getting ready to leave, and just before seven o'clock, I received a call that I did not want to get, and was told that a tractor trailer had rear-ended a school bus. So, I was getting ready to leave, and I live on this side of town, and the bus accident was on, next to Evoque. So, I left immediately, and by the time I got there, the students that were on the bus and the driver had been taken to the emergency room. Police and fire personnel were already on the scene. They were working the accident, and we had lots of people coming, of course, on Volunteer Parkway, but also into Evoque. So, they kept the traffic moving and kept everyone safe. So, it was a very scary situation, and we're very blessed that it wasn't worse than it was. But I just would like to commend the emergency responders. They did a great job yesterday. So, this week, we are winding down TN Ready testing. Last year, the state of Tennessee had had lots of trouble with testing, so this year's been a little bit smoother, and we're thankful for that. Advanced placement testing actually extends through next week, and so I would like to thank you for your support of our advanced placement program. We are testing and passing far more students than we were before without your support. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. And next week, speaking of appreciation, next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we are blessed to have some really high-quality teachers in our system, and they work hard and they are committed to the success of our students. So, they make our district and our entire community very proud. So, next week, if you know a teacher, be sure to thank them. And the culmination of many years of teaching and learning for our seniors at least, will be on Saturday, May twentieth, at ten a.m., when we have graduation. And if it's sunny outside, it'll be in Stone Castle, and if it's rainy, it'll be at Viking Hall, but all of you are invited, and I hope you can come. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lilly. City Mayor's report.
Yes, Mayor. First off, as I typically do, I'll run through some important dates for the coming month. As indicated earlier, we'll have three budget Bristol Exchange meetings to discuss the budget, and also to have department heads handy for any questions that citizens might have regarding service delivery issues. The first will be Tuesday, March the ninth, in the cafeteria of Slater Center. This will begin at six p.m. The second will be Thursday, May eleventh, and that will be at one p.m. in the cafeteria, again here at Slater Center. And then the final will be on Tuesday, May twenty-third, and that will be in the Frank Winston Auditorium at Tennessee High School, and it will begin at six p.m. Also, I'd like to remind council of our meeting this Thursday, May fourth, at six p.m. in the School Administration Office, joint meeting with our Board of Education. And then lastly, I'd like to talk about a joint meeting with the Power Board on, this will be a breakfast meeting on Thursday, June first, at the BTS offices, and this will be discussing our brand as that is rolled out, and that'll be an eight-thirty a.m. breakfast meeting. And also, I'd like to go ahead and plug our first full moon concert, which will be Thursday evening, June first, in the eight-hundred block of the downtown. I'd also like to thank certainly our Parks and Recreation Department, our Fire Department, our Police Department, our Public Works Department for the event management that took place during our April race. That was one that was rained out and stretched into another day, but as always, this crew adjusts on the fly and makes the appropriate plans and manages an excellent event. Lastly, if I could take just a moment of, I guess, the privilege to talk a little bit about zoning and land use regulations and how those decisions are made. Tennessee Code Annotated sets this up so that there's a clear separation or siloing of powers. There's the legislative branch, which includes the Planning Commission, as well as city council. They discuss and approve zoning regulations, and they adopt these formally by ordinance. And anytime the zoning ordinance is amended, there's also a public hearing associated with it. The executive or the administrative piece of that falls to staff to interpret the various land uses and appropriate uses, approved uses, within that zoning ordinance. Lastly, there is the judicial function, and that's what the Board of Zoning Appeals deals with. Once they make a decision, and they are there to review the staff, the staff action and the staff decisions that are made in terms of their interpretation of the zoning ordinance. But that's not the end of the checks and balance system that Tennessee Code Annotated has established. There's still the Chancery Court measure, and it is time-sensitive. Once a decision is made by the Board of Zoning Appeals, it starts a sixty-day clock on the opportunity to appeal that decision, and that decision is appealed in Chancery Court. So, I thought it was appropriate to go through that. I know there hasn't been a lot of dialogue back and forth, and appropriately so, because these are, these do have a judicial implication to it, which makes it very awkward to get into a dialogue about the specifics of it. But I did think it was appropriate to discuss the silos of responsibility being divided between the legislative branch, the executive branch, and the judicial branch of local government.
Are you sharing that with us for a dialogue?
No, sir. No, sir. It's just a review as far. I'll be glad to do that in a different setting. This isn't, a meeting like this does not lend itself well for a dialogue, but I'll be glad to discuss that with you at a different, at a different setting. I'll be glad to give you a business card this evening, and you can call and set up a meeting.
When is this different setting going to be, so you have the whole neighborhood here, so we can discuss?
Well, once again, we can discuss this after the meeting.
I think we're gonna have to move on to city council comments. Who'd like to start us out?
I've got one, I've got one question for staff. I didn't hear farmer's market mentioned. Do we know what our first night, is it this Saturday? This Saturday is our first farmer's market, so I know that's one of those May opportunities that my family looks forward to as well. Thank you.
I think it's also Border Bash, but I don't have the date. Is it the third Friday in May? The first Border Bash is in May coming up also. So, and I'll just keep going. Rhythm and Roots has a reveal press conference on Thursday at five-thirty, and they've been revealing people, the artists as they go along, but they'll have the headliners and also the poster and the t-shirts, so that's pretty exciting. Also, I'll put a plug in for the Friends of Steel Creek, have an annual meeting on Saturday at May sixth, at two p.m. at the park, and if you want a little preview of the Nature Center extension, you can get it at that point with them. Also, put another plug in that the Friends of Steel Creek have been working with our staff and with Tennessee High to have an International Dark Sky presentation at the Tennessee High Auditorium on May eighteenth at seven p.m. And we've got my brother-in-law, who happens to be the director of International Dark Sky, who's gonna be here on a fishing trip, and we're putting him to work at the same time, pretty exciting. And then I'm on the train station board, and on May twenty-first, which is Sunday afternoon, we're gonna have Bristol Train Station Day with a lot of different activities at the train station that we're looking forward to. Also, wanted to just ask if Mr. Sora would do a memo to our boards and commissions about attendance that just, I know we have things in our charter, maybe in our rules and procedures for our boards and commissions that relate to attendance, and just it would be good for all of our boards and commissions, the staff members, as well as the members of the commission, to know what those procedures are for attendance on those. And I think that's all I'd like to say more about Sunnybrook, but I think it's probably better not to. I will say that our Board of Zoning Appeals is made up of citizens just like any of the rest of us, and they try to do the best they can, and sometimes there's circumstances that are a little bit difficult. Same thing, our staff are people just like everybody, and also the Sunnybrook members are people who have deep caring about their neighborhood. So, we have a lot of people coming together with a lot of concerns and trying to do the best they can. So, I'll end with that.
Okay. Valance?
Hope I'm not taking anybody's thunder on this, but one thing really exciting that happened since the last time we sat here was the comprehensive plan kickoff started with council, and we'll have a number of steering committee members come together here. Probably, it sounds like our June meeting is when we'll probably finalize that, but we'll see what the timing works out, as we have to coordinate that with our Planning Commission, and that's gonna help us with some of the big idea pieces, as well as so many different groups that will break out from that and help on just a wide variety of plans that we need to have in place, and help tie together some of the different plans that we do now that aren't completely harmonized. So, that's a great opportunity coming forward, and then I've always been a fan of getting out and voting. Early voting is going on right now. Starting Thursday, the fourth, you can go to the Armory and vote. I think it's through about four p.m. And be informed, the, let's see, early voting ends May eleventh, and then Election Day is the-
Sixteenth.
-sixteenth, so.
Obviously, you're not running this year.
I'm not-
Saturday, it's nine to twelve. The other days, it's nine to four.
Thank you. I encourage you to vote.
To piggyback on what Jack was speaking of, the comprehensive plan, it really is exciting. We met with the group that is leading us in joint session with our Planning Commission, and we've talked a lot about super-regionalism, and that is very important. The state looks to our area to come together on many projects whenever we can, and BTS is such a great source for us in everything that they do in our community, as well as regionally. You know, we're talking with many of our community neighbors and sister neighbors about the Aerospace Park at Tri-Cities Airport. Very exciting there. BTS, you know, has received the grant, and we're very excited about the development at the BTS Business Park, as well as Partnership Park Two through Sullivan Networks Partnership. So, we have a lot going on there. A lot of people ask, what about jobs? When are the jobs coming? And it's so hard to be patient. We feel like we've been patient for a really long time, don't we? But it's a process, and we've worked so hard over the past few years to get all of the right pieces in place, so that we were in a prime position, so that when the opportunity for there to be growth and expansion, we would be well-positioned, and we're diligently, as a council, as a community, as a region, working towards that. Our comprehensive plan, back to that for just a minute, as it relates to super-regionalism. It's so important that we make sure that we in Bristol know what we're doing, so that when these opportunities present themselves, whether it's with Washington County, Sullivan County, our sister city, Johnson City, Kingsport, that we have such a good understanding of what we have to offer and what our finances are and how we can participate, that we are prepared to go with it at any notice. And that's what we're doing. The comprehensive plan is putting that into place, and I'm excited about it. On a different note, that announcement Thursday evening at five-thirty at the museum is supposed to be huge. The headliner this year, they have kept it very close to their pocket, very close to their chest, and we're thinking that it's going to be a huge draw once again for Bristol Rhythm and Roots. So, I'm excited. It's spring, the schools are fixing to graduate. I mean, we have our challenges here in Bristol. It's not all pie in the sky, but we're working as hard as we can to try to make sure that we're in the right direction.
I forgot, Dr. Lilly, I went to academic signing this morning, and I don't know if y'all have been doing that every year, but we have a lot of sports signings for colleges, and this morning was an academic one where kids who had scholarships for ETSU and maybe some other schools as well, but it was pretty cool. Dr. Nolan was here from ETSU to present to the kids and give them, everybody, some helpful hints about starting on a college career. So, it was great to have an academic signing.
I just have three things real fast. Congratulations again to the employee, Bob Williams. It's always great to have an employee that we can honor publicly like that, and it's always so fun to see them hit the doors and get that award. But, you know, kudos to Bob and the great job that he's doing. Second thing is the budget. It's great. We've been lean during lean times. Our budget is growing, but it's growing organically, and that's always exciting. We've had employees that have gone without raises for years, and finally, we've gotten to the point where we can afford to give raises, and that's not taking away from our taxpayers in any way. Thirdly, we'll be meeting with the school board jointly Thursday, and that'll be an exciting time. We've been really diligent about studying everything in depth and getting professionals' point of view as to which way is the best way to go forward, so that we're not wasting anyone's tax dollars. And we'll be looking at our school systems and our school facilities this Thursday, and that'll be an exciting time, and that's all. Thank you.
I'll end up by saying that, you know, during Race Week, we have a lot of folks, a lot of employees that put a lot of overtime in, and we appreciate all you do. I hope everybody's rested up from that week. I do want to say a special thanks to Walter Morton from our library board for attending, Maile Luttrell from Bristol Baseball, Mike Browder from Bristol, Tennessee Essential Services, and former Mayor Joel Staton for attending. We appreciate all of you for attending this evening, and we stand adjourned.